I have a discussion on any item on the next agenda. You may leave, please.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. All the favor, aight. Email warrant for failure.
Here, just a couple from last year. Another couple from this year. I've had a problem with the system going down here and there, but still have aesthetic issues.
I understand people who usually receive it.
I have no problems with some of them.
It's not just me. Shane has problems with it too. And other people have problems.
Nobody's saying anything.
The system hasn't been going down as well.
I haven't seen those. They haven't come on to my cell phone.
Yeah, yeah.
Where is it?
Yeah.
Uh, where is it? Yeah, you're not here.
No, he, I told him we could have you.
Yes, yeah. Is he supposed to bring that to work?
Yeah.
Well, the top two may be. Well, that's what's...
What?
That's what wanted me there. This is... But that's the problem with the company, that it doesn't want to do that. So, yeah. We're just doing it that way. That's a stick contract. Has to be a fee.
I'm asking you to require something.
I'm gonna wait. Email warrant for failure.
Second.
All the favor, aight. Appropriation.
Right.
Let's see more of that. One glass, that'll get back there. This is not gonna work. Uh-huh.
I'm gonna get the appropriations. All the favor, aight. Mark me off.
There's five of them.
Highway payment here. I'm moving. Highway payment here. All the favor, aight. I'm paying my alibi, thank you. Yeah, here we go. Me, yeah. Just me and my bet. Looks like that might cost me medical marijuana right there. All the favor, aight. Make it one for you.
You don't have any? Those are the sheriffs. Just acknowledge those. Those are the airport's marines. And that one's counted out, Jay. Yes.
Inside.
No.
You got two for gang insurance, huh?
Who what?
You got two for gang insurance.
A couple months on each time. No line. It's just how she does it. Look at the date. One was put on the 27th, and then three days later she puts another one on. I don't know. That way she has one on all the time and...
No, eight in a week. I'm moving. Make it first in order. All the favor, aight. Broke conscience when I met her.
How many we got except those?
Well, I don't know what I wanted. The moneybags are getting her again.
I knew it was mine. Oh, they tried that, maybe. I don't remember the last time she finished. I think they's been held up for a long time.
Last meeting? Oh, last time? Uh, Jay and you on there like this?
Yeah, you did well.
Yeah, you did really well. Driving in again.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, favor. O P E H W Insurance Prison.
Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Blaine Wood. This is Ross Mailer. We're here with O P E H W. Discuss your health insurance means, where you're at now compared to where... Okay, so I don't know if you can see the screen or not. If not, we can rearrange things just a little bit. But I have a little presentation that we had been talking about going back to the ACO conference recently, where I believe I met all of you guys at. Talk about your healthcare and where you're at now, what we can provide for you. So Anita was gracious enough to give us employee information so I could go through and make a side-by-side comparison of where you're at now. And that's what it looks like. I'll need to turn that screen a little bit.
I'll normally make it quick.
Turn it easier. I didn't even hear the music.
Didn't see Jay.
Yeah, I can see you all right.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, guys.
Yeah, that worked.
That worked. Okay, so this is what we came up with on the analysis that we did. There's 59 employees under your healthcare plan right now.
No, there's one that was just employee only.
Well, there's 59 only insured employees. And then there's another 10 employees that have a child that's on the plan, another eight that have multiple children on the plan, eight that have a spouse on the plan, three that have a spouse and a child on the plan, and one that has a spouse plus two or more dependents on the plan. And right now, this is a direct comparison of... And right now, this is a direct comparison of the state health plan that you're on right now. And Health Choice. And this is their 2020 rates coming up. Our rates are already published for the year. We work on a fiscal year. It is the same year as the counties. We were born from the counties, by the counties. So we run on that July 1 fiscal year. So just off the... Just first blush, we'll save the county about $50,000 annually just by switching plans. And I'm gonna give you a good reason why we're gonna...
Can I ask you a question real quick? Can you share who some of the counties are that are...
I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
I certainly will get to that. And I was in Grant County on Friday, who they said, "Call them anytime." So... Just a little bit about us. We are a public trust. We work under the statutes of 5574, just the same as the state health plan. We were formed in the same year as the state health plan. We've been in operation for 27 years. It's owned by every... Everybody gets a board member voice. It's the same range for everybody. We don't have a small group here, a large group there. There's no penalty for being a smaller group. 15-person executive board, they meet quarterly in Oklahoma City at the Echo Building. Now, all it is is the board concerning the health insurance. And we have over 100 employer groups right now, and it's grown. Why does it work? Safety in numbers. There's more than 8,000 members on the plan right now. And so when you have a big pool like that size, you don't have the ups and downs that can happen with a smaller county. For example, if you have a large plane, it's really not gonna go against you. Kind of goes into the whole big breadth of everything. That's the legal treatment for everybody. It provides a very stable employee environment. They know from year to year that their health insurance isn't gonna change dramatically. It's not gonna go up dramatically. It's not going to... If it's reduced or changed around a whole lot dramatically from year to year. And I'll show you that here in just a minute. It also provides a really strong recruitment incentive. I'm finding out throughout every county in Oklahoma, that the stronger your benefit package is, the better you have a chance of hiring new people. It is owned by all the participating groups. Again, it's a public trust. We have a very strong track record of being able to provide insurance at a very reasonable rate, both for the county and the employee. And we'll see that here in just a minute. And it's a... You get a professional day-to-day operation administering the plan. You have one point of contact to call if there's anybody that needs anything, questions answered. An employee has a question, they can call, the payroll clerk can call, the clerk can call. Any of it. It's one point of contact. So that gets assigned right up front. So you always know who you're gonna be talking to. Here's our rate histories for the past 12 years. And you can see three of those 12 were zero increases. 2019 to 2020 is a 4% increase versus the national average, which is much higher than that. And this is what it looks like. The national average increase every year over the past 12 years is 6.7%. Ours is under 4. We have 30 counties in the plan right now, and it's grown as I'm out visiting counties right now until the end of the year. 32 municipalities, including, I believe, the city of Cherokee. Is that correct? Five school districts and 33 other assorted organization types. So the plan administration is what we handle out of our office. And when you call in, you get a live person. There's no machines, there's no press one for English or any of that. It goes right straight to a live person on a live phone call or a voicemail. The HIPAA, COVID, and 1095C administration, we handle all of that.
This is wonderful.
Yeah, we handle all of that. That's it. All the way from... And then there's many online tools to use to make all kinds of different changes of things you might wanna talk about. And if you don't know something, like if there's something in the plan that you just don't understand or don't know, or is it available to you, call me.
Do you know what's 1095C? When do you guys send those out? Is it... I know you buy it not...
In the...
Have them out until the end of February.
Right.
But I always give them out to the employees with their W2s within January. So we have a lot of them that are waiting on me to get those W2s so they can go file their taxes.
Ross, we do listen to you.
Yeah, so as soon as we close the December invoice period, so we know what your eligibility was for December, those are able to be generated from the system instantaneously. So as quick as you can get your bill back to us for December is the answer.
A lot of our employees, we have to provide them for our employees, but they don't get that for their family, the ones that have the family. And so they're calling and yelling, and I'm like...
I don't know.
Not my issue. I can't generate that.
Right, right.
That's why I was asking.
And the HIPAA and the COVID administration is also very helpful for a lot of the counties. And again, the simplified billing, I mean, it really is simplified. It's not 20 pages real every month.
So when you say they don't get it for the family, what do you mean?
The Health Choice actually sends it out for the family, sends the 1095 out for the family. Yeah, we just... Yeah, we just generate the ones for our employees. So it states that they've had health insurance for however long they've had health insurance. But if they're on the... If the family's on the insurance, that's not stated anywhere on our form. That form actually comes from Health Choice, and they do not mail it until the end of February. Which by law, they have to have them out by December.
So ours are combined. We're employee and...
That'll be nice.
So let's go over some of the benefits that are gonna be involved in help and save all this money that we're talking about at the time. Right now, we have five different plans: Diamond, Platinum, Gold, Silver, and Bronze. And these are the deductibles and the out-of-pockets and co-insurances that would go along with it. The Diamond Plan is what matches the health plan I most closely. And I have some briefing books here that I'm gonna give you guys at the end of this. So it has all this information, much more detailed. So right now, we're looking at a 750 deductible with a $3,000 annual app on it. Some of the other things, like Connect DME, that's your durable medical equipment. This free. There's no charge for that at all. No co-pays, no any of that. MD Live, that's another thing that we've added in some years ago that is a virtual office visit, if you will. It's web-based, app-based, phone-based. It's 24/7, it's fully confidential, and it's 100% free. There's no co-pay, there's no any other money out-of-pocket whatsoever. It's just a phone call or a web chat, whatever you wanna do. Primary care, office visits, I have a $20 co-pay along with the urgent care. Specialist is a $50, and then I put this in emergency range, which is a big deal. We charge a $50 co-pay only if you're not admitted. If you're admitted to the hospital, then it gets waived.
Gets what?
Waived. Some of the preventative things that are covered here: cervical screenings, mammograms, prostate cholesterol screenings, colorectal screens. And on those, it includes the digital imaging portion of that. So if they do find a polyp and remove it, it's all considered into that one event. They don't break it into two. So it's just one co-pay, one... Well, it's not even a co-pay, it's just free. And that gets included. I have also tobacco use counseling if you need it, and that's also free. It also works with M D Live as well. Value-added benefits. And you'll notice that we use the Blue Cross Blue Shield Network, which is statewide. It's a PPO, not an HMO. So you have availability of any doctor you want, anytime. There's no... You do not have to go to a primary doctor. Or you can if you want, if you'd like to, Dr. Stay with the doctor. There is some services and discounts that Blue Cross offers that is just for Blue Cross members. 24/7 nurse help line. If you need something that you think is relevant right now and you need to call Blue Cross, they have it up. Fitness programs. $25 a month plus a $25 setup fee for pretty much any fitness centers that would be available in your area. YMCA is nationwide. And believe me, that's about half of what it costs me before I came onto the program. Special beginnings, that's for maternity purposes, from early pregnancy all the way through six weeks after your child. It's kind of a counseling program and works out pretty good. There's a dental wellness center that you can go on, find out a little bit more about dental, things that you would like to take on. Care on Target is a little more detailed. If you have gotten a specific diagnosis or you see something going on, you know, with you, you just need to kind of know more about what that is, that's what that is. It's online through Blue Access. You go on and it's better than WebMD because it's just Blue Cross. It's not everybody in the brother talking about a specific illness or something. There's also wellness guidelines. And then Connect Online, Connect is an online community of people that you can just web-based chat with. It's like a chat room, if you will, the old school chat rooms. A little more... A little more evolved. It's not quite Facebook, though. Some of the additional benefits that you get, the $500 child accident reimbursement. You'll get reimbursed up to $500 once you have a child hit or deductible or have your deductible for that year.
So this benefit is unique for our plan. If you cover a dependent child on our plan, and you're involved in an accident, say they broke an arm or an egg, and you take them to the ER, this plan will reimburse you for the first $500 that you spend in those claims. If you had to come across another plan that offers this. So if you've got kids, especially if a lot of them are accident-related, right? This is a great way to return the juice you're out of pocket.
And then there's also a 50% child deductible reimbursement. Very similar in how that works.
Can I just add a little bit on that?
You had a little bit, please.
The child deductible reimbursement. What we'd like to do is have a dependent child deductible as half what it is for adults. But Blue Cross can't support that, so we have to offer it as a reimbursement. So effectively, what they look at here is, anything that you spend over half, you can file for reimbursement. So lowers that to child deductible.
M D Live. What that is, is something that we've offered, kind of in plus with the Blue Cross benefits. It is a web-based... It's a web-based or mobile app system that's usable 24/7. It's confidential, private security. You can sit out in your truck in the front there and actually have a conversation with somebody on the phone about something that is needing to be taken care of. You have anything that, you know... There's over 50 different things that it can help cover. Okay? Let me go back for just a second. Again, it's optional, you don't have to use it, you can still go through Blue Cross as you want. This is a zero co-pay, zero... Blue Cross, you can still pay a co-pay. If you needed to talk with someone, like the 24/7 nurse line is free. But if you go into like urgent care or something, that's where this can maybe take place, like insect bites, all kinds of different things. And we're gonna watch a short video on what it actually does provide.
Did you know you can see a doctor from the comfort of your home? Now you can with M D Live. Our board-certified doctors are available on demand 24/7, including weekends and holidays. We can help with more than 50 routine conditions. We can even send a prescription to your nearest pharmacy when medically necessary. No appointment required. Skip costly urgent care or ER visits and download our free app today to learn how M D Live can help you. M D Live, always there.
Okay, so they mentioned over 50 different things that could be available to talk to them about. These are some of the routine conditions that people typically use or see. Allergies, insect bites, flu, cold. If you have some... Something else going on in your area, headache, you just can't shake. This is a good first start for sure. It could be the only way to go. Plus, it's more than just those things. One of the other benefits of M D Live is that it does offer counseling and health services, which is a very big deal in today's world. And it can be the gant of any... It can be workplace problems.
It's what workplace...
Yeah, it can be workplace problems. We don't have... Marital problems, everything, all the way to suicide. If you're going through something, this is a good place to go. Connect DME, durable medical equipment. That is for things that are braces, whether it be a joint brace or like an arm brace or something like that. You know, respiratory supporters, your CPAPs, BIPAPs, things like that. It also covers sleep studies, which can be done in your house, which is a lot better than going to a clinic like I did. And they use less electrodes, and then you're in your own bed, in your own house, you actually get to sleep. So they actually get a better day. So the whole thing is free. That's the big part of this, it's all free. There's no cost, no co-pay, no... So and they will not only provide this to you for free, they'll ship it for free. They'll set up in your home for free with M D. And then they'll show you how to use it and clean it if you need. It just depends on what all it is. It's a wheelchair, it's a wheelchair. If you get a new CPAP machine, they're gonna help you here, they'll take care of it. Prescriptions. We use Express Scripts for our prescriptions. I believe that's the same as Health Choice. I might be off on that just a tad. Over 800 different local pharmacies. We made it convenient for rural counties, if you will. So you don't have to go find a Walmart, you know, 20 miles away or whatever to get the prescription. Most local pharmacies are in this plan, and if you run across one that's not, typically we can get them into the plan very easily. Some major retail pharmacies, we've got all those in the plan as well. CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, all the big ones. And then there are some safety control mechanisms that we put in place just for when... For things that we have to do, age and quantities, things like that, mutations. And here's the coverage options. Again, it's Diamond, Platinum, Gold, Silver, Bronze. The Diamond still matches real close to what Health Choice is. It's a $50 deductible. Generics are $10, preferreds are $45, and the non-preferreds are $60. The bottom line down here is mail order at 10, 60, and 100. And those are... You know, the things that you would have to be a mail order versus picking up there. Enhance prescription benefits. Contraceptives and devices are free. No charge for those. Smoking cessation products are free. No charge for those. And any of the over-the-counter bird or acid reflux medications, as long as you get a prescription for it, is free. Same way with the diabetic oral medications and amigistamines. Prescription for it is $5 per month and $12 per 90 days. And amigistamines cover all the major brands. This is a big deal. Come January 1st, our copan insulin is gonna drop to $25. Right now it's $45. So that's gonna save any members that you have that are diabetic on insulin to the tune of a few hundred dollars a year, just that. And there's no... They don't have to do anything, nobody does. This is gonna get the plan started in January of this year. Dental. It's $1,500 plan pay maximum. There's no elimination or waiting periods or anything like that. Free preventative, so two cleanings a year, which includes the x-rays and all of that, any diagnostic services. Beyond that, there's a $50 deductible. Basic services, there's a 20% co-pay. That would be fillings and just above and beyond just your normal clean. 50% on major services, those would be something like group analysis, things like that. And then 50% on orthotics. Most dental plans don't cover orthotics at all. What they do is very expensive. And then after that, it's 100%. 100% paid. 100% to you at the plan pay maximum. to you at a plan pay maximum, so. Vision, we go through V S V for our vision provider. There's two different plans, an enhanced and a standard. The differences are is in the materials or frames, there's a twenty-five dollar co-pay for the materials frames, it's once per year on the enhanced plan, once every two years on the standard. And that can count for your contacts or glasses, you can have either one. On the contact fitting and evaluations, it's sixty dollars or a fifteen percent discount, whichever works out. And then laser vision correction, we got those offered at discounted rates, but they change those. Group life, we go through the standard for our group life. The highlights here are it's a guaranteed issue. It's automatic enrollment, no matter what. We do include spouse coverage on this, a twenty-five percent of the employee volume, and child coverage on this, a ten percent. There are four different employee volumes here listed below, which shows what the spouse coverage would be and the child coverage would be, plus the employee. There's a double indemnification for accidental death and dismemberment per, for the members. And that's guaranteed issue. Additional life benefits, these are some life insurances that you can purchase in addition to the standard life benefit. Twenty thousand dollar coverage, five thousand dollar insurance, so coverage beyond that. Go up to five times your annual pay or half a million dollars, whichever's less, has a maximum coverage. Guaranteed issue coverage is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or five times your annual pay, if you can get it. It's fifteen percent accidental death and dismemberment per five thousand dollars of coverage as well. And then there's the takeover clause. In other words, if you have something better right now or something that doesn't exactly fit into this, look at it, keep it. The additional life benefits, you can give your spousal coverage a fifty percent, and your children, you see there are ten thousand dollar coverage or twenty thousand dollar coverage for two dollars and a half or four dollars. Now, these are the rates, the age-based rates that we have here for the five thousand dollars of coverage. I hear both with optional accidental death and dismemberment or without, you can have it either way.
Damn, there's a hard.
Retirees, we do have some decent, really decent retiree benefits. Under sixty-five, nothing changes. Everything stays the same, just as if you were still until you reach the age of sixty-five. And then you go on to the Medicare plan, you know, part of the prescription plan. And we help out with that right off the bat, right when someone retires that month. We have one person in our office that does nothing but retirees, and they help go through all the different plans and things available and find the best one for you that you have, based on what prescriptions you're gonna be taking unless you're gonna go to the doctor, so on and so forth. Once you are retired, you can choose from four different life plans, five, ten, fifteen, and twenty, and that also includes spouse coverage. Going back one further, going back just a step here, we do go through and make sure you get your overs subsidy, and we do that specifically for each person. So, you get a hundred and five dollar subsidy from both of us, being a public employee. We apply that to the premiums for you. So, premium rates. Dental premiums are listed here, pretty self-explanatory. The vision premiums, again, we got enhanced and standard listed here, pretty self-explanatory. The group life premiums are here, so six dollars for the twenty thousand dollar coverage and nine dollars for thirty, twelve, fifteen, fifteen. And then the health coverage trades, the diamond, platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. These are the health premiums that we have right now for this year and going forward into the end of June next year. And again, diamond is what most closely relates to Health Choice, and these are the numbers that we used in that first slide that I showed. So, what's next? If you decide that it's time to maybe go through and take it one step further, usually that next step was how much money are we talking about? We've already kind of done that, so. A lot of times, the ADA, I'll give a small paper or two that would have the very local agreement on it, that they can read through, make sure it's up to par and everything else. We go through the risk assessment one time for the county, just to verify, you know, what's what health insurance-wise throughout the county. It's just a one-time assessment. Most counties are all the same, as far as that goes. Very little difference between counties whether they're bigger or little, doesn't matter, pretty much the same mix of people. We look at your retirees and covers going into the plan, as far as who's actually retired on, I'm mentioning this now, or he's gonna retire quickly. And then we have an online enrollment program. It's built for the members to enroll themselves. Some counties let them do that, and some counties they wanna do it all themselves. So, it can be done either way. But it's a very simplified system once we know what plan you want to do. And then it's just, you just go through it and determine what you want for your benefits or health, and then go from there. Does it sound too good to be true? I do ask you to ask your other counties that are on the plan. Pawnee County, for example, has been on since nineteen eighty-two, they're one of the original members. So, and again, I was Friday in Grant County, and they've been on since two thousand three, and they are very, very happy with our services as well.
And Woodstown, right next door.
Oh, yeah. Forgot to throw that on.
That's all I was thinking, was Wood, yeah, Wood and Grant both.
Garfield's on it as well.
Oh, thank you. And then Wood and Grant were.
And then why is the risk assessment necessary? It's just a one-time deal for the first year's participation. And we're gonna be trying to determine what the expected claims are versus what they actually are, for a risk percentage. And it looks like that. And if it's less than five point one, you're automatically in, no matter what. If it's more than five percent, sometimes we would have to take it to the board, but I don't think we've ever seen one over five, so, at least on the counties. So, here we are, we're done. These are the premiums. And then, I'm gonna roll back to the very first screen that we had, just to go back to the savings part of it. And that's what it looks like, and this is based on actual numbers that we received. Now, I have these briefing books here. They are very specific to what we just went over, they have a lot more details, okay? So, all I'm gonna do is get one of these, so that you can have it for your knowledge.
Thank you, sir.
You betcha, you betcha. And then I do have a interlocal agreement if you wanna go ahead and have your ADA look at it, you know, see if that's, you know, something that I wanna talk about, take it to the next step, so.
Do you have something that shows the difference in the children, like where you're better than what they are?
I didn't. I can email it, I can email it to you.
Yeah, so it's a one-page, side-by-side.
That's what I'm saying, where you guys are better.
Yeah, I haven't broken down the exactly what the benefits are, not the cost. This is the cost part of it. I have a one-page with the benefits.
Well, I mean, the cost is a great deal, but then.
Well, yeah, you wanna make sure you get the coverage.
The coverage is much better.
Way better.
That's more important to me, but.
Yeah.
This will clearly demonstrate that.
Yeah.
And on the diamond, bronze, all that, every employee has the ability to choose, or does the county have to go with one, like we do now?
The county goes with one, like we do.
No, what, you guys are signing up yourselves, it's timing anymore. I will help you.
Our diamond plan has our best benefits, and that, everything you've seen in comparison is to the diamond. Benefits are important, do you know?
You can go ahead and start.
If we're ready to start, we might have a fun next year.
Yeah.
And another thing is, it helps us with budget time because they are fiscal year, not calendar year, so that helps to minimize your budget. I mean, when we sign up with Health Choice, you're affecting two fiscal years, and you gotta remember that, you know.
Yeah, I'm working with people going through budget meetings right now, and then I go to the other counties, they don't worry about it so much.
Right.
You'll know where our rates are for July one by the thirty eighth of February.
When is your option period?
So, we have two option periods. We have a group option period, where the group decides what they're gonna do, that's March, and then the employee option period is two months, through the whole of April and that. That way, we're able to provide you with a, an invoice for July before you're doing payroll
Any other questions, anything that I can answer for you all?
And no matter, we have an employee that has a spouse or has a child that has medical problems, I mean, they're accepted no matter what.
They're pre-accepted. That's probably for the parents.
We couldn't get past that before, so.
You know, I used to say stupidity is a pre-existing condition.
Well, sorry, Dr. White, just kidding.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Can I get your card? Do you have one by ten?
I don't have one on me, if you'll go into my office, I'll go to the right there.
That way, I have you, too.
And here's the email.
That is kind of me, not me, it's the guilt of you.
Taking the two places just like that.
Okay, fine.
So, I think the most.
That much time.
So, this is.
The most important thing to do is to request claims history data from Health Choice. That will take the longest time. Everything else in this process is quite quick for us. As soon as you can get that. We have a sample form that you can use. Just stick it on the letterhead, send that over.
Tomorrow, so, but Health Choice will be in October, I'll be done by the first November, Do you guys help, do you guys help with that process? Or do we all that through Health Choice if we decide to not go with Health Choice again? I know, like the retirees, I don't have a list of those.
We'll get those. Typically, we go through overs to get that, because if you go, certainly they are.
Right.
Okay, we'll find all of those people, and we'll have one with those, so they won't get dragged into the normal enrollment process.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you guys. Thanks for having us, I really appreciate it.
Sure, that way you guys can go right back.
All things. Declaration of Southside.
Just put it up. If not, I can run one of the records that should, seven, ten, sixteen. I can hear that light一闪 over there, if there is one, just go on it, please. Just get over that, we'll go to the next one, and then we'll push it over there.
Kenny Crockett, brothership of Beth Doc and the Division three, and Hysteria Backer.
They're gonna take this to surgeons? Yeah.
Sixty-one donations from Richard Hendrick and Keith Harmon for forty hours.
Thank you, folks.
Sign down there, all three of you, just down at the bottom anywhere. I emailed you guys the information that I had on here. I talked to Jay several times on it. I finally got ahold of Chris Borin on it. Chris knew nothing about this. Some of the counties are already doing resolutions to appoint you guys to do the inspections for that, and I might go, I probably don't, I wouldn't want to do that. Like I said, Chris knows nothing about it, so he's, advised us to just take no action on it until he further.
I'll show them, we're taking no action. All circles, and all big. Any unpretending business. Come the weekend, I'll say. Bye.